The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery and filing of this notice on January five, two thousand and twenty-two. This notice was on that date posted in the Bolton Board and the Township Office, sent to the Courier News, the Echo Sentinel, and Tappin to Warren, and filed with the Township Clerk of the Township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise for the pledge.
I believe it's the United States of America and the Republic of Washington, one nation, individual, liberty, and success.
Oh, now call the roll. Mr. Bishi?
Here.
Mr. Croson?
Yes.
Mr. Desai?
Here.
Demagio?
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein? Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
Mr. Brazee?
Here.
We have a forum.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Second.
Yes, please. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Croson?
Yes.
Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Mrs. Demagio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Correspondence and information. I will turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Brazee. So, on the correspondence side, the Board received seven emails from three senders. One was a concern with the use of social media by Board members. The others were all thoughts, mostly opposition to mask mandates and other return to school topics. On the HIB section, we're reporting two investigations at Warren Middle School, both of which were determined to be cases of HIB. And a note for the Board members in your packet, there's a reference to fifth graders. It should be sixth graders, but I'll make sure I get you an updated copy of that. If you're not approving anything related to those reports today, I'll make sure you have an updated copy before the next meeting. That's it for correspondence and information.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for those of us who've joined in person. We appreciate it. A couple of agenda topics I wanted to share. Item A three, this resolution formally approves the general education preschool expansion that was presented last meeting by Mrs. Smolinski. Mr. Bishi, Mr. Croson, and I had the opportunity to tour our, I could only say fantastic and impressive preschool experience that is offered at Mount Horrib. Thank you again to Mr. Cook and the entire Mount Horrib team for hosting us, answering all of our questions, and allowing us to see this magnificent program in action. So, thank you again for that. Item B three on the agenda, I wanted to thank Mrs. Brown at the middle school for her work on obtaining the grant, and I also want to extend a deep gratitude to the Youth Services Commission for their generosity. Very much appreciated on that. Item C two and C eight, a very big thank you for these substitutes in teaching staff and custodians for answering the call for our substitutes. Again, this is one of the reasons why we were able to keep our doors open recently. It is very much appreciated, all that you do, and thank you for taking the time and effort to to apply to these positions. Looking forward very much to having you as part of the team. Item C three, I wanted to extend, on behalf of the Board, a congratulations to the staff who are listed here. This is advancement of the guide. This is a career milestone for many and a major accomplishment, and certainly a tremendous amount of work that goes beyond this. So, congratulations to all of them. Non-specific, non-agenda items. Dr. Mingle had shared with the Board, the Warren Middle School Orchestra, a virtual concert that they put on. So, thank you for sharing that with us. Congratulations to the orchestra. I think it was a fantastic program. Kudos to them, and certainly, hopefully, that is our last virtual. Let's hope. So, we can get back to being in person in concerts. A note to the Board, the February twenty-eighth meeting begins at six P M. This will be our annual ethics training as a Board. We anticipate the normal business board meeting to begin at seven P M. And a last topic, Dr. Mingle had shared with me, an idea, and I'm certainly very eager to explore this. Once a quarter, the idea is to have our, one of our three standing committees have a kind of a pre-meeting before the board meeting, so there would not be a quorum present. And essentially invite the community in, as we are now, and have a free discussion, open topics to the Board, whatever's on the community's mind. Engage with them in a way that sometimes we can't do in a traditional board setting, I will say, very informal. I know I am looking forward to this, tentatively, I'm will try to kick the tires on March fourteenth with Dr. Mingle and myself as a as a trial run for this and work the kinks out, and I think, easy for me to say, but more to come on this. So, thank you, Dr. Mingle, for all of your support and helping to get this through, and certainly thank you for the idea and the suggestion to do this. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Brazee. Just a few comments on non-agenda items, and I'll address agenda items when we get to the business portion of the meeting as well. Congratulations to the Warren Middle School Girls Basketball Team and their coach, Mr. Fabiano. Today, they won in the quarterfinals in a decisive fashion. They'll be moving on to the semifinals. Also, congratulations to Warren Middle School student Emily Wang for her first-place finish on violin in the Central Jersey Music Educators Association Band Orchestra and Chorus Audition. There are over four hundred students who auditioned for the Central Jersey region. She came in first place. In March, Emily will go on to audition for the All-State Intermediate Orchestra. Congratulations to Emily and to middle school orchestra teacher, Mr. Sarah Muller. This is also National School Counseling Week. I think we all know that in Warren, we're very fortunate to have full-time school counselors in each of our elementary schools, and a nice team of counselors at Warren Middle School. Their expertise and their skills cannot be overemphasized, how important they are to us. Thank you to our amazing professionals this week and every week. And, of course, I'm sure what's on the top of mind for everybody is the Governor's Press Conference today. The Warren Township Board of Education, as I think everybody who participates in our meetings knows, has long hoped for the ability to utilize local COVID risk data to guide its decisions, including passing resolutions to that effect last summer. The Governor's announcement of an impending shift away from a statewide mandate effective March seventh is welcome news. As previously announced, our plan has been to return to our risk-based masking expectations based on our regional case data. As with any major changes to state mandates, we look forward to receiving additional guidance and implementation details in the coming days, so that we can review our plans and share them with our community well in advance of the state's mandate expiring next month. I just want to remind everyone that oftentimes, when there are changes from the Governor's office, there's a headline, and then we get documentation a couple of days later that has a lot of nuance and detail. And so, it's important that we not draw immediate conclusions about all the details that will go into the mask mandate being lifted. So, we hope to have that in the next few days, so that we can share that with the community and what that means for us. You can expect updates in the weekly community briefings every Thursday between now and March seventh. We have scheduled meetings for both the District's Return to School Committee and the Board's Ad-Hoc Return to School Committee between now and the Board's next meeting, so that we can talk about it more there on February twenty-fourth. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to presentations, we have none scheduled for this evening, which leads us to discussion. So, this is, I guess, this Board's first discussion item with regards to the budget. By now, the Finance Committee has met. We've established our traditional Budget Buddies relationships to help help Board members get the information related to the budget that best helps them to stay informed and make decisions. So, this is, this is our opportunity to, as a Board, discuss the budget. There was a preliminary budget attached, and I believe it was the last meeting minutes for the Finance Committee, January meeting. If there's anything to add or ask, Mrs. Zahn is the Chair of Finance. If there's anything you would like to add, by all means, please feel free to do so. Floor is yours.
I think it's, we're at least a meeting away from a formal presentation to the public. And, for that reason, given the, a number of items that we were still awaiting some additional detail on for our next Finance Committee meeting, I wouldn't want to get too far ahead, Chris, but if you wouldn't mind just sharing what you feel comfortable sharing with the public right now about what the status of this process is. And just for everyone out there who doesn't or hasn't gone through this before, this is about six months of work. We start this in November. The administrators are on it right from the beginning. The Board gets its first taste of the data, usually at the beginning of the new year, in January. And then we continue with this process through a tentative budget and a finalized budget all the way up through April. So, this is a good portion of what the Board of Education is charged with, with doing. Right now, I think that we're poised to put before the public a budget that I think we're going to be very satisfied with, and I don't know that I want to get too far ahead of Chris on this.
I just want to pull up some notes.
Yeah.
All right, so, as Mrs. Zahn said, the budget development is a, feels like we're always working on the budget. As soon as we'll be done on the one, the one in April, we'll probably take a month off and then start putting together the salary tables for the budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. With that said, some considerations, some high-level considerations for the Board's discussion at this point are a couple. One, and this has been reported out in the minutes, but for the public's benefit, we have no expiring bank cap this year. So, for the public's knowledge, bank cap is something that a school district can put aside to, as a way to increase the tax levy in future years, when you don't go to the tax levy cap in a certain year. So, what that means is, three years ago, this Board approved the tax levy either at or probably above the cap, which means three years later, when that cap's about to expire, there is no, there is no available, there's no available bank cap. There is bank cap for what we call Years Two and Three, but there's no one-year bank cap that's expiring this year. My initial review of the budget looks that we will be able to meet all of our obligations either at or below the two percent tax levy cap. And, but at this point, there are a lot of unknowns for our budget. And I'll just go into, into three big ones. The first is that state aid figures are not yet known. We will get our first glimpse into them following the Governor's budget address, which is scheduled for the fourth Tuesday of February. Typically, and this is usually the case, budget, state aid numbers, budget numbers are released to the District's two days following that. So, we typically get them the fourth Thursday of February, which, if you think about it, creates a really short turnaround time for the budget, because our budget, preliminary budget hearing is two weeks later, on March fourteenth. So, that'll be a busy fifteen or sixteen days for myself and the, and the business office. The second piece that we'll be getting, hopefully, a glimpse into very shortly, is a demographic study. So, one of our biggest, biggest challenges over the next couple of years will likely be growth. And the question is, when will that start, and at what rate will that happen? We should get some understanding of that in the next couple of weeks to a month, as that demographic study becomes something that we have available to us. And that will help us frame, you know, where where the growth is coming, and what that means in terms of staff allocation. And the final piece, and that process is going to start later this week, is we are developing a working group, a steering committee, on what to do about lunch next year. And depending on what that group decides, that may have, will more than likely have some impact on the budget in terms of, you know, how we support programming, what the PTO has supported in the past, as well as how we fund the solution for next year's lunch program and beyond. That's just the high level. There's a lot of details that go underneath those high-level remarks, and we don't want to answer any questions, either in this forum here or offline, depending on your comfort level.
Thank you, Chris. In the past, when we've had a meeting this early, it's been because we've really needed to get a sense from the Board of what their philosophy was with regard to the use of bank cap. We don't have any expiring bank cap this year, although there is one point three million roughly available. None of that is expiring in this year. It's yet unknown whether or not this year's budget will create additional bank cap for three years down the line. Absent that level of conversation and needing to get some sort of sense from, from Board members where they, they land, this meeting, you know, really lacks some of the detail that we would otherwise want to have a substantive conversation, and for the reasons you mentioned. So, you know, I really encourage all of the Board members to reach out to your Budget Buddies after the next Finance Meeting, which is in a couple of weeks. Actually, I think it's next week. I believe that the Finance Committee will have additional information that we can share certainly out to our Finance Buddies in preparation for this being an ongoing continuing conversation at the Board level. Anyone has any questions?
Seeing none. Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. Thank you, Mr. Mingle. Moving on to committee reports, I don't believe there are any. If I'm mistaken, please stop me. Seeing none, we will move on to public commentary. This is our first of two sessions for public commentary. This is for any item that is on the agenda this evening. If you could kindly state your name, address, group affiliation, if applicable, you will have three minutes to share your comments with the Board. Please direct all comments to myself. As the Presiding Officer, we will start in the room. If there's anyone in the room who has any comments they would like to make for agenda items, seeing none, we will go to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom could kindly use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, this is for agenda items. This is the first of two. Seeing any at this point. I have a motion to close public commentary, please.
Second.
Those in favor? Opposed extensions. First session of public commentary is closed. Dr. Mingle, before we head into items for Board consideration in action, are there any items that you wish to address or provide information on?
There are a few. So, thank you, Mr. Brazee, and we made an adjustment to make it a little bit easier for, to keep things connected to the business agenda, so that my opening comments weren't so long. So, hopefully, this is helpful. There are a couple business items I just want to speak to. Item A two, which is the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three calendar revision. Just want to make it clear to everyone what those revisions are. It's, a draft copy was posted on the District website, so that the public had access to it. First, the NJA, NJEA convention dates were incorrect on the original draft, so that has been corrected to the right dates. More significantly, though, the, the high school shifted the opening of the school year at the high school, so that they had three professional development days prior to the first day of school for students. So, that's eight twenty-nine, eight thirty, eight thirty-one. And then, instead of having two professional days in October, they will only have one. We've decided to essentially keep our previously approved calendar by just moving everything up a day. So, let me explain how that brings us out of alignment with the high school. Our teachers will report on Monday and Tuesday, eight twenty-nine and eight thirty, for their professional development. That's two days. And then our students will begin on Wednesday, August thirty-first. That's one day before the high school. In October, we will match our original plan. So, October tenth and eleventh will still both be teacher professional development days. It seemed better for us to have the two and two in August and September, August and October. And it also, there's also some contractual considerations that made that necessary. So, the high school and the K eights have different collective bargaining agreements with different rules about how many days you can have in different places. So, we do know that that creates some challenges for parents who have kids in both the pre-K eight and the high school, that will be off by one day in August and one day in October. I apologize for that, but there was no easy way to work around it, really. But the, the really good news is that this adjustment means that the last day of school will be no later than Friday, June sixteenth, and it was previously scheduled to be on a Monday, which nobody likes, staff, students, parents, anybody. And so, it's much nicer now to know that it'll be no later than that Friday in June. So, that calendar's up on the website. Everybody can see it and take a look at it. I also want to follow up. Mr. Brazee talked about the grant award in D three. I want to provide some additional information to the community about that. You'll start seeing communications around this in the next week or so. Under the leadership of middle school student assistance counselor Carol Brown and the Youth Services Commission, this grant provides funding for a program that will address significant and growing concerns regarding the student use of social media and the connection between social media use and HIB allegations, confirmed HIB situations, and other student conflicts. The use and misuse of social media among our students at all ages, elementary included, is having serious consequences for student well-being that bleeds into our schools in more and more serious ways. The sessions that that grant is providing for will be led by a gentleman named Andrew Walsh, who is a licensed clinical social worker, who specifically specializes in family and school issues, including the connection between social media and other online activity and peer relationships in schools. The program will be available first to all of our middle school staff in late February, and then to all parents in the community for an in-person session on March fifteenth. We'll send more information out about how to attend. It is Mr. Walsh's preference that that is an in-person-only activity, because of the nature of the topics and the Q and A. Half the time will be dedicated to Q and A with parents who are in attendance. There will also be a student-focused session at the middle school on a date to be determined. So, much more information will be coming out, but we really encourage our parents to come out. This is a really important topic, one that's getting more and more significant to us. So, please watch for those announcements. And thank you to Mrs. Brown and the Youth Services Commission for helping make that possible. I also want to follow up on discussion. I'm sure we'll have more discussion when we get into the business agenda on D two, which is the policies that were there for second reading, just to help clarify what might be some misunderstandings, or just to try to help make it as understandable as possible. Couple of things. One, the new policy language adds language about sexual abuse and assault awareness. Those policies are also posted on the website, so everybody can see in bold what language is new compared to the language that was already there. We believe that we already meet these requirements with programs that I provided to the Board. The Child Abuse Prevention Program, which is a state-run program that we run for kindergarten and third-grade families and students, that language is not about sexual education, which is where a lot of the commentary was coming from, about sexual abuse and assault awareness. I also share with the Board that these are concerns in our community. We refer students and families to Division of Child Protection and Permanency, to PEST, which is a psychological and psychiatric emergency support service, to their counselors and to other kinds of services for sexual abuse and assault. And none of us want to have to talk about that. I certainly don't. But we do think it's important to make sure that our kids understand what that is and how they can report it, and where the safe places are for them to go. That's what that policy language is meant to be about. The sex, the sexual education changes that people are asking about are really embedded in the state's standards. So, the Health and Physical Education standards were adopted in two thousand and twenty. They are publicly available on the state's website. That's where you can find information about, by the end of each grade band, what students are supposed to know and understand about different kind, different aspects of human sexuality. These are the standards that we are required to write our curriculum to meet. When you, you can go onto the District website and see our existing Health and Physical Education curriculum, which already meets pretty much everything that's in the two thousand and twenty standards. We have no reason to believe the state is making further adjustments to the Health and PE curriculum standards that are on the state website. We will, we have the Curriculum Committee meeting, which is in three weeks. Mr. Kimick will be able to give the Curriculum Committee an overview of what that process will look like, and all of that comes back to the Board of Education in the summer, in August, two thousand and twenty-two, for final approval. So, there will be another public dialogue and opportunity for commentary, Board member feedback about the actual curriculum revisions, to whatever extent there need to be, in August. And I also want to point out that there is existing board policy, it's five-two-five-zero, that allows any parent to opt their student out of health education experiences that they deem offensive. Their specific language in our policy, again, it's five-two-five-zero for how that process happens. Every year, we have a couple of families who choose to do that, whether it's at the elementary school for the introduction of sexuality that happens there, or for the more formal sex ed in the middle school. So, I just wanted to try to clarify those things to help the conversation, and obviously, I'm happy to answer additional questions. That's all I have on the agenda.
Items for Board Consideration in Action. Are there any items, any Board member wishes to pull for a separate vote or discuss further?
Yes, Mr. Brazee, if you could pull under D two, policy two-four-two-two for a separate vote.
P, D two, the first one, P two-four-two-two?
Yes, the first one.
Comprehensive Health and Physical Education. Yes, got it. Thank you. This is all, please.
I just have a question on C nine, since this is new. This after-school club, is this the middle school? I assume it's just the middle school.
Yes, this is middle school, specifically for the Memorial Day event.
Got it, thank you.
Do you like a separate vote for that?
Any other items? Any, Mr. Bishi, please.
Just on, back to your presentation and, and, you know, D two, the twenty-four, twenty-two. So, just to be clear, like, if you really wanted to get into the detail and see if anything, if a member of the public or a parent were to get into the detail and see specifically what they had a, what might be a controversial item that they did not want their child to see or be in a classroom for, they would go to the New Jersey SLS, New Jersey Learning Standards, Comprehensive Health and Physical Education, that's on the website, right? They could see that, and actually, in detail, see what they may or may not be, you know, concerned about, right? That and our curriculum on our website. So, if there were a concern, they could reach out to administration or a Board member and specifically point to the black and white, you know, part of that, pardon me, those learning standards or curriculum that they would have a concern with, right? It's out there for the public to see.
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
And, and I would, I would encourage people to start with, at the teacher level, if there's a concern with something in the curriculum and what's being taught. Our teachers are very responsive, and these are very sensitive topics. The teacher, actually, a few years ago, this Board passed a resolution directing us, the administration, to look for additional training and support for our teachers in this area, which they have received. So, they're well-informed and can definitely answer questions.
And if, and if, remember, the public does have a problem, it'd be interesting to hear that before our summer curriculum writing effort that you just set forth, right? Good, thank you.
Any other items to pull for a separate vote or to discuss, question, clarify? Seeing none.
Motion to approve items for Board Consideration, A one through A four, E one to B four, C one through C nine, D one and two accept, P two-four-two-two.
Second.
Yes, please. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Croson?
Yes.
Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Demagio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Motion's passed eight zero.
Motion to approve item for Board Consideration, D two, P two-four-two-two. Second.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Croson?
No.
No.
Mr. Deci.
No.
This is Tomagio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
No.
This is on.
Yes.
Mr. Brizzy.
Yes.
Motion passes five-three. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. I believe there is a new business. I think the only new business here is the ethics training for the board. At the next uh, February. Twenty-eight meeting. Moving on to public commentary, this is the second and final public commentary for tonight's board meeting. If any member of the public wishes to share comments with the board, this can be on any topic. If you could kindly state your name and address, group affiliation, if applicable. You'll have three minutes to provide the board your feedback and comments. And if you could. Direct all comments to the presiding officer, it would be appreciated. We will start in the room. There any public commentary in the room this evening? Yes, please state your name and address, please. They're gonna give you a microphone. We can hear you.
Feel so fancy. Do I have to receive?
You're good.
Okay, um, so I am definitely somebody who will be super thrilled when we don't have to wear masks anymore. But I was wondering if the board gave any other consideration to the other constrictions that the children are under. Prior to removing the masks, such as like having to sit in the three rows. And not being able to interact normally or work in groups, depending upon risk level. Because I'm slightly concerned that the masks will come off. And then how many times is it somebody going to have to quarantine? And how, like, how is that going to interact with our kids? And I was just, uh, and affect our kids if they have to flip back and forth ba- based based on the risk level. Because for an anxious child, every time you make an adjustment, they go into panic mode. So when you take it away and then you say, oh, now we're at this risk level and you bring it back. You bring on another panic for that kind of child. And this isn't going to affect everybody, and I'm aware of that. But there is an enormous amount of documentation out there showing how much the pandemic has affected children's mental health. And I know that that's one of my biggest concerns is a child's mental health. And so I was wondering if there's any consideration to removing all the other restrictions and leaving it as. Maybe the only thing that would change is just whether or not you wear a mask or don't, don't wear a mask. Because you either believe that masks work and that it doesn't matter if I'm standing next to you right here or six feet away. Or you don't believe they work and then it still doesn't matter. So, like, I, that, that's, that's where I'm coming from. Like, I, I hope that. I, I know that masks are such a polarizing thing, but there's so many other things that are in place for our children that make it so that school isn't normal. And doesn't always feel safe. And how can we bring us back to even more normal? And when will these restrictions end? When will we stop having to flip-flop? And I know you don't necessarily have the answers to all of that right now, but having an idea that this could end. Can be very helpful to a lot of people. I hope that was clear.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for your comments. Any other public comments from within the room this evening? Seeing none, we will go to the Zoom session. Uh, if you could kindly state your name, address. I see someone with the name of M P. Please go ahead. You'll need to unmute. You may be unmute right now.
Sorry, I. Rebecca Tucker Pruskowski, seventeen, Forest Drive. I wanted to thank the first person who commented because I did want to reiterate what she's saying. But to further that, I wanted to ask, um, in addition to. Well, I think the grant that you spoke about was more related to social media, but I guess my question is, how? And what is the school doing to address the mental health of our children? There are so many articles out there, and I think we've all read them. That talk about what is going on with our children and how this has affected them. And I would love to know, again, I know you can't say anything right now, but I'm just curious. To know how you're going to be supporting them through this change that's coming, which. I know some people are very excited about. Um, I know some children are very excited about it. But, um, just wondering how we're going to be getting through this, what the school is doing to help our children. And then secondly, how is it, um, going to affect all those other things? So this is what the first, um, the first woman had mentioned too. What? Is it just the masks or are, is it also the, you know, the form in Genesis? That we have to fill out every day? What is, does this mean that everything goes away? Or are there still going to be restrictions on the kids and how they, you know, how they operate in school? So I'd love to know, you know, once you guys can get together and figure it out. Kind of what, what it will look like going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Next, I'm reading it from afar. I believe that's Shafali. Tijani, if you could please go ahead.
Sure, uh, Shafali Tajani, one Aspen Court. Um, once masks do become voluntary, um, sort of an extension of what the previous two. Parents had, had stated, um, what happens with the quarantine rules like for close contact? Because you can't get rid of masks, but then keep the quarantine rules because that could be a lot of kids and staff out. So just wondering if those will also be looked at together and modified, um, once they do become, uh, masks to become voluntary.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you for your questions. Appreciate your time. Are there any other public comments? Either in room or on Zoom? Yes, please.
Hi, Peter Dos, thirty-nine Ellsworth Drive. I, uh, I'm wondering if, if it can be addressed whether or not, um. Um, as we know, this, this pandemic is a very fluid situation. And right now, thankfully, we are on a fairly steep. Downtrending of of cases. But I think it's pretty, pretty much a fair bet to say that, uh, we're probably going to have some more variants in our future. We don't know what they're going to look like. Um, certainly, medicine doesn't know, uh, what it's going to be like. And so if we do take away masks, um. Um, as a physician, I'd like to know that there are plans in place to quickly ramp up. Protective measures, uh, in 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 the event that we have, uh, another variant that may be. More dangerous than Omicron.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dos. I appreciate your comments. Are there any additional? Comments either on Zoom or present here? Seeing none, is there a motion to close public commentary?
Motion, second.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, public commentary is now closed. Dr. Mingle, are there any additional follow-up you wish to add?
I'd be happy to. And I think all four commenters are hit on exactly what I meant by the beneath the headline question. So it's easy to see a headline that says state mask mandate goes away effective March seventh without knowing what exactly that entails. That's what we're waiting for that guidance on. The governor in his press conference today said that in the coming days. There would be specific information about what schools should be considering as they move in that direction. Uh, which I'm sure will address questions like quarantine guidelines, because as some might probably remember. There are different rules under the current guidelines. If masks are on or off, there's different rules about how much distance there should be between students, quarantines. The whole test to stay program requires you to have students universally masked under the current guidelines. There's lots and lots of implications of the masks coming off. And we want to make sure that we can provide a comprehensive overview of what all of that looks like. So what I, what I imagine happening, hopefully at the next meeting, because that is. Before that date, but if we don't have the guidance, it'll be when, when we have it. The kind of spectrum that we've talked about last summer, where we had a chart that was kind of, you know. On one end of the spectrum, we're here with all the mitigation ever efforts fully enforced. On the other end of the spectrum, we have reduced mitigation efforts because the risks in our local community allow us to be there. And then in between, we have different checkpoints. We tied that to the regional Cowie score because it was easily accessible data. That is consistent, not just under COVID nineteen, but consistent under all public health, uh, situations, the flu, everything else. So that it was very easy for people to access that data and know this is what it means in green, yellow, orange and red. We actually adopted all of that last summer. And it said what we did in classrooms, what we do with masks, et cetera, spacing, et cetera, et cetera. So what we have to look at and see is, can that be revived? Does it need to be modified based on any updated guidance? Because I I agree with all four commenters, we need, and and this is a hard thing to balance. We need both predictability and flexibility so that we can move stricter and looser depending on the conditions. But people know what's coming and they're not waiting and finding out on a Thursday that on Friday, everything they thought about with school looks different. So that is what we, we hope to bring forward. And we can try to think about where to embed some information about mental health into that process. But there will be a presentation later this school year around one of the, the district strategic plan goals on social emotional learning, which is a mental health focus. So that we can, certainly there'll be more public discussion about that as well. If you have specific questions, you can always email them to covidnineteen@warrantibo.org. Covidnineteen@warrantibo.org. Any questions that come in there, get forwarded to the appropriate person. And then the answer is not only go to the person who asked the question, but go on the district FAQ about COVID. So we have tons of information on our website. The, the COVID nineteen community briefings are searchable all the way back to March two thousand twenty. Uh, if people want to go back and see, um, and you might remember in the beginning, those were daily, and then they were several times a week. So. Each Thursday will continue updating for the next few weeks, for sure.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. We certainly look forward to those updates. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, abstentions, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.